With no other business before the meeting, clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Gill.
Here.
Mann.
Here.
Duster House.
Here.
Bauer.
Here.
Holbrook.
Here.
Hevermo.
Here.
Farha.
Here.
Sasson.
Here.
Ryan.
Here.
Lepper.
Here.
Mussolini.
Here.
Brink.
Here.
Heinecke.
Here.
Hozlock.
Here.
Fourteen Eyes.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Alderman.
I move the minutes of the previous meeting be approved as printed. Second.
We have a motion, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered.
First petition is by Rinella Distributing Revelation Outlaws Baseball requesting permission to conduct or Ralph won't have the bond requirement right waived from now through February 22nd. Clerk recommends approval.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered.
Have a revocable permit application for encroachment city right away by Sean Nelson requesting permission to place a sign over city right away at 800 State. The Director of Utilities and Engineering presents this request subject to the following conditions: One, the sign must not be larger than three feet by five feet; Two, the sign must be located at least ten feet above the sidewalk and structurally sound; Three, if illuminated, the sign must be properly lit according to city code; Four, proper approval and payment of sign permit fees to be made to the Planning Development Department.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Alderman.
I move we concur with the Engineering Department.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered.
By the Quincy Catholic Charities and Quincy Medical Group requesting the following streets to be closed for the bridge to Gap to Health Race May 17th from 6:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. and this request will be set to street closings in the routes to the proper authorities. They also are requesting these routes be posted, no parking from 3:00 a.m. until 12:00 p.m. noon on May 17, 2014. Auxiliary police are requested also. Your Honor.
Yes, Alderman.
I move the prayer petition be granted and proper authorities notify. Second.
We have a motion, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered.
By the Quincy High School class of 2014, all ninth party committee are holding their all-night party on Friday, May 30, 2014, at the Scotty's Fun Spot, 8,000 Broadway, beginning at 11:00 p.m. and ending at 5:00 a.m. They're requesting section 30.401 curfew be waived during the night to permit participants under legal curfew age to return to their homes without incident.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Alderman.
I move prayer petition be granted.
Second. We have a motion, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered.
I have a report of the Quincy Plan Commission recommending an approval of the Special Committee for St. Francis Church, 1721 College Avenue, to use existing building for religious purposes and to build a parish hall parking lot on the property with several requests to speak.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Move the rules be suspended to hear the speakers.
Second. We have a motion, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Rules are suspended. Before we allow speakers, we'll have Assistant Corporation Council Bruce Alford discuss what we can and cannot consider as a council, what can and can't be talked about tonight.
Our code provides in section 29, 203, sub-three, the standards for a special permit and in this case, the special use permits allowed as long as it isn't unreasonably detrimental or doesn't endanger the public health, safety, morals, comfort, or general welfare. Also, the special use can't be injurious to the enjoyment of the of the property in the immediate vicinity of the special use. Also, the special use can't impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of surrounding property and uses. And then also, it has to take into account that there's adequate utilities, access road drainage, and other facilities. And so those are the things that the planning commission can consider. And so if the council was going to do anything, those are the things the council would have to take into thought when they make consideration on this matter.
Are there any questions before we allow the speakers? Okay. Hearing none, we'll go by as it's printed here. We have Diane Andrew. And if you could state your name and address for the record, and you'll have five minutes.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. My name is Diane Andrew. My address is 3,000 Rose Valley Lane here in Quincy. I am the coordinator of the Parish Center Capital Campaign and the fundraising that we're doing. I'm not going to take much time. I realize that a lot of comments that I have to make really probably aren't going to make one difference on what your decision is because of the fact that you have certain requirements that you need to follow anyway. But basically, what I wanted to do was just indicate to you that St. Francis Parish has experienced significant growth in the last few years. Our school enrollment's been up, which is wonderful. Our church membership has increased by hundreds of people, of new households since 2006, and most of that was due to the consolidation of the Catholic schools. We actually had looked into building a parish center before that time and had decided to put that on hold. So this has been going on for many, many years where a parish center has been needed based on a lot of the leaders' feelings within the church. When our church was built 154 years ago, they did a wonderful job building a very large, beautiful church for us. However, we feel that that time, they could not have either imagined the size of our church parish today, the different activities we have going on, and all of the different people involved in those activities. Also, the organizational complexity of our church today is tremendous. So there are many, many reasons why we need a parish center, and I'm not going to go through all those. But the main one probably is for the security and safety of our children. We have many events that take place within our school building. On any given day, you know, we could have two to three funerals a week, in some weeks, and you may have 75 to 100 people in the basement of the first floor of our parish school building, and you have all the children going down to lunch at the same time. And I'm not going to say it's chaos, but I've been down there when all these people are down there. You've had people coming in and out the door. We have some doors locked where they have to buzz to get in, but then in other situations, they can go over to the door where the people for the funeral dinner, they come in that door, and there's no security there whatsoever. So we definitely need better security for the kids. We also do have a food pantry that we administer to approximately 200 families per month. That is not just our parishioners. That includes a lot of the Quincy community, and that food is mostly provided by our parishioners. The place that they currently work out of is a small room back behind our cafeteria with a small hallway where they work to get the food in and out when their stocking shelves. Volunteers come in there, pick up the food, and then they deliver it to the individuals who need it. It's not the best situation when it comes to serving food from that food pantry. So having a parish center would definitely be useful in that situation.
You have one minute.
Okay. The lay leaders in our parish have researched the question of a parish center for years, and we determined it's time to get an oversight committee together, which we did back in 2011. At that time, we had, I don't remember, maybe eight to 10 people on that oversight committee, and after a lot of hard work, we sent out many different outreach, or we did many different outreach activities to get people in the parish involved, listen to them, listen to their questions, everything from suggestion boxes to informal gatherings, formal gatherings, and so forth, so much. I do want to let you know that Bishop Thomas John Paprocki of our Springfield Diocese has agreed that he feels that we've done everything that we possibly should be doing in order to take everyone's considerations and objections into consideration. So he is allowing us to go forward based on his comments. So on behalf of the St. Francis parishioners that are for the project, which we feel outnumber the ones who may not be so much for it or may not like some of the things that we're doing, we would like to ask the City Council to please recommend the special use permit for us. I want to appreciate the time that you've given me, and if you have any questions.
Any questions? Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay. Next on the list, we have Tracy Orne. And Tracy, if you could state your name and address for the record, and I'll remind you you have five minutes.
Sure. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Tracy Orne. I live at 1249 South Park Terrace. I'm going to be even shorter than Diane. From a parishioner's perspective and a big-picture outlook, why I feel the council should support the special use permit, three reasons. I'm a lifelong member of the parish, by the way. Three reasons: connecting for the future, safety of the school and parishioners, as Diane mentioned, and also investment in one of Quincy's best neighborhoods. I'm obviously biased because I grew up there, went to school there, but it is truly an investment. Having a connected parish center builds community, which is the key to sustain and grow the parish. It's clear this is the sentiment of the majority of parishioners, like myself, who have invested in a three-year capital campaign. As a younger member, I think it's really important to have an attached parish center, especially if you don't have children in school. We all know that we become more and more disconnected with texting and social media. It's kind of refreshing to know that you can have a real conversation in the parish center after Mass. The safety of the school and parishioners, it seems pretty incongruent to me to have Quincy University across the street implementing a security entry system where the grade school on the other side has doors that are unlocked from time to time because of funeral dinners. The parish center solves this problem. Given this unending winter of snow and ice, it also helps the safety of elderly parishioners and also disabled parishioners. And finally, the investment in one of Quincy's neighborhoods. It builds value. The Franciscans have long invested in capital projects that are all about building community. It's something that helps the entire city. I'm also confident that the center will be a showpiece for prospective parishioners and also people considering a move to Quincy. And the bottom line is, we're also talking about practical private investment, which will provide jobs for local firms and workers. And frankly, it's a capital improvement that we've needed for more than 20 years, but as a Franciscan parish, we take the poverty thing pretty seriously. But it is time to build this parish center. Please consider supporting the special use permit, and thank you for your time.
Are there any questions? Thank you. Okay. Next on the list, we have Ms. Deborah Knott. Ms. Knott, I'll remind you, if you could state your name and address for the record, and you have five minutes.
Thank you. I'm Deborah Knott, 1200 South 14th Street, an architect with Klingner and Associates, and we are working with the parish on this project. I just wanted to let you know that the reason that we ended up coming before the Plan Commission was that during site plan review on the project, we were told that after their research, that the parish did not have, had never registered as a non-conforming use, nor did they have any existing special permit. So we decided that it was appropriate that it get remedied at this time. The parish did their due diligence. They had a neighborhood meeting, invited all the people within the 250-foot notification area, and they had one couple attend who were not in opposition to the project. They just simply wanted to see what the updated plans were. So they have done everything they can to keep the adjacent property owners apprised of what they're doing. And as you can see from the previous statements, they desperately need the additional space. So we hope you are in support of this.
Are there any questions?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Alderman.
Deborah, are there plans and blueprints already that any of the neighbors have seen or any of the people in opposition have seen?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
They've been in the bulletins as far as parishioners, and they were available on easels at the meeting with the neighborhood, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Any additional questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we have Father Blazer. And if you could state your name and address for the record, and I'll remind you you have five minutes.
My name is Father Don Blazer. I'm the pastor of St. Francis Church. I live where I work, 1721 College Avenue. Honorable Mayor Moore and City Councilors, thank you for this opportunity to speak with you about our project of wanting to build a parish center. Briefly stated, without repeating what has already been said by several of the speakers, we need this hall very much because of the thriving parish that we have. Our parish consists of about 1,650 households or families, which translates to about 4,500 individuals. We have 275 children in the grade school, K through eight, plus preschool for three- and four-year-olds. So as you already heard, the school, the security is being compromised whenever we have a funeral luncheon, and we have somewhere in the neighborhood of anywhere from like 50 to 85 funerals per year. And so the vast majority of them have a luncheon afterward. And as you've heard, people are coming through the school building, and that in our day and age is not a good thing. And it's been pointed out to us by outside agencies, including the insurance carrier. They said, "Get that out of there as soon as possible." And we have nowhere else to do it. We do have a meeting room in the basement of the rectory or the parish office building, but that is a full flight downstairs, and it's not handicap accessible. So we're looking for a space that is truly handicap accessible, and this would serve that purpose. Our plan is also to have this hall directly connected to the church, because the church building is about 129 years old now. The parish itself is 150-some years old. But the church building is about 129 years old, and so it was built at a time when they didn't use restrooms like we do today. And so there are two very small inadequate restrooms in the church building. So by having it directly connected to the church building, we can have restroom facilities that are directly accessible for the people in the church as well as the people in the parish hall. And of course, any services in the church that would be followed by some kind of reception could be directly accessible from the church into the hall rather than crossing the street in all kinds of weather. We don't have to talk anymore about weather. You already know. And of course, we have, as you heard, many different activities, parish organizations, Bible study groups. We have scouting activities, various parish organizations, and countless events, gatherings, and activities that need a space for them to meet. So suffice it to say, these are only a few examples of how this growing and thriving parish really needs adequate meeting space. And so we would appreciate your support, and we seek your approval for a building permit for St. Francis Solanus to build a parish hall. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
Are there any questions? Thank you, Father. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, we have Mr. Dennis Holbrook. Dennis, if you could state your name and address for the record, and I'll remind you you have five minutes.
I'm Dennis Holbrook. I reside at 4025 Holiday Drive. Mr. Mayor and Council members, thank you for letting me speak tonight in support of the St. Francis Parish Center. My wife, Pat, and I have been parishioners of St. Francis for over 30 years. We've raised three daughters there, and now we have two son-in-laws and three grandkids there. We are very involved at St. Francis, Eucharistic ministers, ushers, and the RCIA team. I am president of the Holy Name Society, our men's service club. I'd like to join the choir, but they said I'd make a darn good usher. Pat and I are enrolled in a two-year lay ministry class with the Springfield Diocese. We are involved with Quincy Crusoe, Great River Tech, Quest, and Residence Encounter Christ, which is a prison ministry. And in 2015, I plan to enter the Deaconate Formation in Springfield, if only by the grace of God. I do not tell you this to boast, nor do we do it for any monetary reason. We do it because we are sinners who want to embrace our Catholic faith and evangelize. In St. Paul's Letter to the Ephesians, Chapter 6, verse 11, "I'm here tonight to put on my armor for God." I'm here for the hard-working families that have dug deep into their pockets to pledge and give over $2 million for our parish center. If you had come celebrate Mass with us on Sunday and did not do anything else during the week, I can understand why someone might question this center. But God wants us every minute of every day. I will stand here tonight and tell you, if anyone thinks this center will be about bricks and mortar, I'll tell you, you're wrong. My whole family sees this center as ministry opportunities. We need this center attached to our church with ADA-compliant bathrooms, so we don't treat our members who have special needs as outcasts or second-class citizens. We need a cry room for our younger families, so they continue to worship with us each week, and a room for brides that get dressed on their wedding day. Like Father said, prayer groups, Bible study, and PSR will use this center throughout the week. But most of all, we need a large gathering room and a kitchen. We need this so we can socialize and build community. When we build community, we build discipleship, and when we build discipleship, we build up the body of Christ, and that is what all Christians are called to do. St. Ignatius taught that if we do not share the grace we receive, we will lose the grace. This is our time to plant seeds of faith, just like the families in 1860, whose vision and sacrifice built our beautiful church. I truly believe, just like St. Francis of Assisi, we now are being called to rebuild God's church. We have the blessing from our bishop and the support of Klingner and Associates, extremely gifted and hard-working men and women who have been with us since the very first parish meeting when the dreams of our center surfaced. Only God knows the number of donated hours they gave us before we hired them. Three weeks ago, our Brother Martin Room was full of contractors lining up to bid. More positive and hard-working people at Quincy, you city leaders would have been proud. The vote tonight is for our church. It's for God's house. Our time on this earth is short when you compare it to eternity, and that doesn't give us much time to make a difference. This parish center is about Jesus. How could anyone say no to Him unless evil has crept into their heart like Judas? This parish center will be holy ground for me. The men's club that I represent will donate countless hours working for God there. Please help us put our faith into Christian action. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I do have a question. Alderman. And Dennis, not to be particular, but we can certainly disagree, or agree to disagree, that people can oppose this without having evil crept into their heart. I think that's a little overstatement, don't you? I mean, you've got significant opposition within in your own parish. To make the statement that evil's crept in your heart, if you don't support that, I think that's a little bit of an overstatement. Is that fair?
I think that's fair.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any additional questions? Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have Christina Michael Bickhouse.
No, Dolores Foster.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I overlooked somebody with Dolores Foster. My apologies, Dolores.
Let's see. Honorable Kyle Moore and City Council members, I don't have any eloquent speech written. I represent some people in the parish who were hoping that we would build a parish hall across the street from our church. Everyone wants the children to be safe. That was really not what it started out to be. It came about in the process that everyone started harping about the children. But there was, the older people that I have spoken with are not so worried about the bathroom situation. They're more worried about the ample handicap parking with easy access to the church on the north side. And we are becoming, our elderly people are, you know, it's just a natural process, not silly to say, but we are getting older, each and every one of us, and that the blocking off of the north side driveway will make matters worse instead of better, and will not provide much additional, hardly any, maybe two spots more of handicap parking. Actually, the people are going to have to walk farther to get into the parish center to get to the church. And also, many people are very upset about a hole being cut into the church that was built in approximately 1883. There was an alternative plan that was suggested but easily dismissed that would provide for a canopy. And I realize that this is not directly concerning all of you, and I certainly don't have malice in my heart. I would never want anything to happen to the children, but I think, I believe what happened in Sandy Hook, it didn't have to do, the guy made it in anyway. His mother worked there. So there are ways, and we also know that things happen in shopping malls and all over the place that we cannot control. But there is a need for a hall. It was just that there is not even reassurance after churches were integrated some years ago here in Quincy of the Catholic churches that will have enough priests in the future to operate the church that we have. So anyway, I come with sincere intentions, and I hope not to offend anyone. I thank you all very much.
Thank you, Dolores. I appreciate it. Okay. Now we'll have Christina Michael Bickhouse. And if you could state your name and address for the record, you have, remind you you have five minutes.
Sure. Mike Bickhouse, 4916 Highway 24 East here in Quincy. Christine is not here this evening, so you'll have to put up me. She's much better looking than I am, so that's just the way it is. That's my thought, so that's my good point for this evening. When I was asked to be a member of the parish hall committee, and now the chair, I had to think about it at first. I wanted to say yes right away, but I've been involved in other building campaigns, and I know the time that takes them away from work and family. And it's done that. But I thought about the church, and I don't know if you've ever seen St. Francis Church, but it's a beautiful church, and I wondered what those people thought about 100-some years ago when they built this thing. I mean, I don't have any idea that we'd be enjoying the fruits of their labor today. So that was part of the reason for me agreeing to be on the committee. I want to build something, hopefully this parish hall, that somebody will be enjoying 100 years from now. Why do I give you this background? Because I've got a lot more. I just want to show you that we're a church family, and our roots run deep. Mine for 20-plus years there, for others here, a whole lot more. They've spent their whole life, and their parents and their grandparents have. So some people, you know, we've had somebody come up and speak against it, and I know that some of the Alderman have calls about it, for people who are against it. We've had some people here speaking that are for it. Some of those people, actually all of them, have done a lot for our church, and I'd like to publicly commend them for it, more so than others. The parish wouldn't be here today without them. As you can see, they're passionate about the parish. They care, and that's a good thing. There are others here just as passionate who are in favor of it. Imagine if we were to pool that passion and move us all in one direction. But unfortunately, the parish is like a family, and like all families, we argue sometimes, such is the case here. Unfortunately, because the need to obtain a special use permit, some have chosen to make it public. Imagine having your personal family argument in the middle of the street. It's not a pleasant thought. The various parish committees were chosen, represent the parish, in construction as parish hall, just as this council was chosen by the people of City Quincy. Okay? We've worked for over two years to come to this point. The idea of a parish hall precedes us by many more years. There have been countless meetings, requests for information, input parish-wide and otherwise. We are currently in the middle of a capital campaign, as you've heard. The plans before you have been designed and redesigned to accommodate various inputs we've received and compromises made by the various committees, until what we have before you today is what everybody, is what we have. Is it what everybody wants? No. Can it be? No. Even I don't agree with everything 100%, but I'm not a dictator. I support it because I believe, given the limitations of time, money, and compromises, it's the best plan for the parish. We believe we've given all our members more than enough opportunities to provide input and share their feelings about it. But for those of you in attendance who feel they have not been heard, or if I had said something to personally offend you as Chair of the committee, I publicly apologize. But for those who are here because they have heard, but for one reason or another have been heard, but still don't agree with our decision, I have one thing to say to you. It's not easy. It's not easy making decisions knowing that everyone will not agree and may be mad at you because of the decisions that you make. But that's why we were appointed, to make those not-so-easy decisions, and I'm sure this council knows what I'm talking about. Our decision was based on all the input we received and what we felt was best for the parish now and in the future. Are we correct?
You have one minute.
I believe we are, but we'll let history be the judge. But we're not here tonight to resolve internal parish discord. We're here simply to ask for a special use permit. And so we have before this council petition tonight that was recommended by the Department of Planning, unanimously approved by the Planning and Development Committee, and recommended to you. No neighbors within 250 feet of objective. In fact, as you heard, the one neighbor that showed up was in favor of it. I am, in fact, one of those interested parties, since I still own our first home on Elm Street, and of course, I am for it. We engaged a quality firm in Klingner to lead us through this process. We believe all the requirements have been met, and so we ask this council to approve it. I believe it is the simple answer to our request, albeit not an easy one based on maybe what you've heard this evening. Thank you.
Are there any questions? Yeah. Mike, Mr. Bickhouse, I got a question for you.
Yeah.
How is this project being funded?
It's been funded through pledges, through the parish hall. We've had some, we've also had some bequests from wills and stuff that's been funded through.
Any tax money from the city?
No.
So no tax dollars are going to this project? So I'm just wondering, why are, what are we, are we being asked to decide whether private money should be spent on a private property on one side of the street or the other? I mean, if you can, Dan, if you can help, oh, I did not think you were going to say something. But you see my question, you know, I guess I don't But you see my question, you know, I guess I don't understand what we're being asked to vote on. I thought, on a special, a special use permit. But it seems the discussion is a parish discussion for parish council and for the administration and the parishioners.
I would agree. I mean, that was my point about us, it's, we're not really here to discuss an internal parish issue.
But that's exactly what we're discussing.
Yeah, that's what we're discussing. But really, it's all about approving this petition.
Chuck, is that, is that correct? Okay.
Any additional questions? Thank you. Last speaker is Father John Doctor. Okay, going once, going twice, sold. I want to entertain a motion to resume sitting in the city council. We have a motion, a second. All those in favor? Opposed? We are now sitting in the city council.
I got a question for Chuck. Chuck, this has already gone through site plan review, and they've met everything that they needed to, as far as parking and everything else?
Right, we've taken a look at the site plan, and that's when the issue came up. We looked at the zoning, realized that the history on the zoning was that it's a church in a residential zoning district with no previous registration as a non-conforming youth. That's, we've formed them since there's been expansion. Churches are required to get a special permit. They had to go through the planning commission city council. In terms of parking, they're adding five additional ADA parking stalls within an existing parking lot, plus adding 11 stalls. So, from a parking standpoint, we didn't note any problems.
Thank you. Any additional questions?
Your Honor. Go ahead, Paul.
Alderman Havermail.
Chuck, with the parameters that the mayor laid out and what we've talked about before, is there any, is there any reason to deny this special permit at all?
From the staff.
Strictly from a city code standpoint.
From the special permit section that Attorney Alpha read through.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, thank you.
We didn't see any reason to deny this request.
Okay, thanks.
Alderman Brink.
Chuck, just real quick, the special use permit, whether the parish hall attaches or doesn't attach to the church is not in consideration for us.
That's not a condition that we look at as part of the special use permit process.
Thank you.
Any additional questions? Thank you, Chuck. I want to entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we concur with the planning commission.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. All those in favor? Opposed? So ordered.
I have the bank statement of conditions for September 2013. Get my stuff together here.
Move the, move, I'm sorry.
Town and Country Bank, State Street Bank, Bank of Quincy, Merkentown Banks, First Bankers Trust, Farmers Bank of Camp Point, Farmers Bank of Liberty, and Brown County State Bank.
Move those to be received and filed.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? So ordered.
Have the sales tax report from November 2013 to be $796,910.78.
Move that take the same course. All those in favor? Opposed? So ordered.
The home rural sales tax report for November 2013 to be $821,723.30.
Move that take the same course. All those in favor? Opposed? So ordered.
I have a notice of pre-hearing conference by the Illinois Conference Commission on its own motion versus Ameren Illinois Company doing business as Ameren Illinois regarding reconciliation revenue collected under rider EDA with actual costs associated with energy-efficient demand respond programs and reconciliation of revenue collected under rider GER with actual costs associated with natural gas energy efficient plan to be held in office of the commission in Springfield on February 19th at 10:00 a.m.
Mr. Chairman, I move that be referred to legal.
Second. We have a motion, a second. All those in favor? Opposed? So ordered.
Have the mayor's appointment, Linda Godley, to the Human Rights Commission.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Alderman. Sassen.
I move the mayor's performance to be approved.
Second. We have a motion, a second. All those in favor? Opposed? So ordered.
And our first resolution is authorizing amendments to the employee handbook sick pay buyback.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Alderman.
I'd like to make a motion, send this back to the Personnel Committee.
Second. We have a motion, a second. All those in favor? Opposed? So ordered.
Who second that? Ryan? Okay. Send back to Personnel.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Alderman.
I have a question on sending it back. Would that be on the next Personnel Committee agenda? Is that the intent?
Yes, it'll be Monday, Monday night.
Next Monday?
Mm-hmm. The 24th.
All right, thank you.
Our next resolution is requesting permission from IDOT to temporarily close the left lane of eastbound US Route 24 State Highway in the city of Quincy from Second Main to Missouri State Line. The left lane of westbound US Route 24 in the city of Quincy from the west terminus of State Route 104 to Missouri State Line. In the right lane of North Third Street, US Route 24 State Route 57 in the intersection of State Route 104, May 17, 2014, for the bridge to the Gap Health Race, 6:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. noon.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Alderman.
I move for adoption of the resolution.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Gill.
Aye.
Mann.
Aye.
Deuster House.
Aye.
Bauer.
Aye.
Holbrook.
Aye.
Havermail.
Aye.
Farhoff.
Aye.
Sassen.
Aye.
Ryan.
Aye.
Lepper.
Aye.
Mussolini.
Aye.
Brink.
Aye.
Heinecke.
Aye.
Oslag.
Aye.
14 ayes.
The resolution is adopted.
The next resolution is requesting permission from MODOT to temporarily close the left lane of eastbound US Route 24 State Highway in Marion County from the west end of Memorial Bridge to the Illinois State Line. The left lane of westbound US Route 24 State Highway in Marion County from the west end of Bayview Bridge to the Illinois State Line is approved, above designated on May 17, 2014, for the bridge to the Gap to the Health Race, 6:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. noon.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Alderman.
I move for adoption of the resolution.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Are there any discussions? Any questions? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Gill.
Aye.
Mann.
Aye.
Deuster House.
Aye.
Bauer.
Aye.
Holbrook.
Aye.
Havermail.
Aye.
Farhoff.
Aye.
Sassen.
Aye.
Ryan.
Aye.
Lepper.
Aye.
Mussolini.
Aye.
Brink.
Aye.
Heinecke.
Aye.
Oslag.
Aye.
14 ayes.
The resolution is adopted.
Our last resolution is Utilities and Engineering Director recommends approval to proceed with reimbursement to Brown Electric Construction Company in the amount of $3,200 for the replacement of a street light.
Your Honor.
Yes, Alderman Brink.
Move for adoption of the resolution.
Second. We have a motion, a second. Are there any questions?
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
To Jeff Conti, please.
Jeffrey Conti.
This was caused from an accident, correct?
Correct.
So, are we paying for this, or?
No, we've actually, the trucking company has reimbursed the city for that expense.
Any additional questions? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Gill.
Aye.
Mann.
Aye.
Deuster House.
Aye.
Bauer.
Aye.
Holbrook.
Aye.
Havermail.
Aye.
Farhoff.
Aye.
Sassen.
Aye.
Ryan.
Aye.
Lepper.
Aye.
Mussolini.
Aye.
Brink.
Aye.
Heinecke.
Aye.
Oslag.
Aye.
14 ayes.
The resolution is adopted.
Our last resolution is Utilities and Engineering Director recommends approval to proceed with reimbursement to Brown Electric Construction Company in the amount of $3,200 for the replacement of a street light.
Your Honor.
Yes, Alderman Brink.
Move for adoption of the resolution.
Second. We have a motion, a second. Are there any questions?
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
To Jeff Conti, please.
Jeffrey Conti.
This was caused from an accident, correct?
Correct.
So, are we paying for this, or?
No, we've actually, the trucking company has reimbursed the city for that expense.
Any additional questions? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Gill.
Aye.
Mann.
Aye.
Deuster House.
Aye.
Bauer.
Aye.
Holbrook.
Aye.
Havermail.
Aye.
Farhoff.
Aye.
Sassen.
Aye.
Ryan.
Aye.
Lepper.
Aye.
Mussolini.
Aye.
Brink.
Aye.
Heinecke.
Aye.
Oslag.
Aye.
14 ayes.
The resolution is adopted.
I have an ordinance for a second presentation, and this is a sticker rate increase, and we have two speakers on this item.
Move we suspend the rules and allow the listed speakers to speak.
We have a motion, a second. All those in favor? Opposed? So ordered. We will hear from our speakers as they are printed. First is Mr. Russell Ash. And Mr. Ash, if you could state your name and address for the record, and I'll remind you of five minutes.
Russell Ash, 2704 Kentucky Road, Quincy, obviously. Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, older women and older men, and thank you for the time you are going to allow me. What I would like to do is, I handed out before the session a piece of paper. Did you all get that piece of paper? It's from the Herald Wig. Okay? What I would like to do is if you would please take in consideration paragraphs 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, specifically 4 and 5. Okay.
Do you want mine? Because I've got it out of the paper.
Are there any questions about paragraph 4 and 5?
Yes.
Please.
Okay. By my calculation, that $1.25 and then that total $300,000 isn't correct. By my calculation, an increase in the sticker fee from 50 cents to 75 cents would actually increase our gross revenue from the program $325,000 a year. Do you disagree with that?
No, I, but basically, being trained to be very conservative. I am wanting to make sure that we help the city, that I get your attention. You just did it. I hope everybody got his attention, because now the savings at $1.25 is double, at least, right?
Okay, and of course, if we don't, if we do nothing, it would be quite a bit more than that. We don't know the exact number, but if we do nothing to amend the section of the ordinance that requires us to be the only individual waste hauler, it would be a considerably larger amount than that, if we're, if we're going to make ourselves the monopoly, in effect. You agree with that?
I agree with that, but that wouldn't be a monopoly if you let everybody, if you stayed by your ordinance and got rid of all the other people.
Right, if, if we.
In my mind, that's not a monopoly.
Well, I mean, it, in effect, is, the city's the only one doing it. But that being so, we won't argue about that. Let me go to the next part.
Please.
If, we, we have a series of non-exclusive franchise fees for a variety of things, including electric and cable. If we established a franchise fee that allowed the waste hauler, say, over one or two trucks, so we don't eliminate the moms or pops, and say we added a franchise fee of 7% of the gross revenue that those haulers collect, that then would collect something of what we're missing in the other 5,000 or 6,000 potential households that are using those waste haulers. Do you agree or disagree with that?
Definitely. In fact, that's what I refer to in paragraph 4.
Okay, well, and by my calculations, that would be around $100,000, just using.
Mine are higher, but that's all right.
Okay, so that's $425,000 we can collect just by doing that.
Easily.
Okay, thank you.
Other question?
Mr. Ash.
Russell.
Oh, Russell, thank you. Kind of following on to what Alderman Farhoff said, so I want to make sure I understand his comment and your comment, because it kind of coincided there a little bit. So you're saying that 75 cents, because you kind of agreed with what Mike said, that we would, we would realize $325,000. Is that based, I was a little unclear, is that based on the 8,000 figure that we're looking at right now, or is that based on, what, what number is that based on?
Based on total stickers that Sherry has provided. I think she said 365,000, but that wasn't an annual figure, that was actually a quarterly sales fee, sticker fee, right, Sherry? 300 and something thousand stickers every quarter?
A million stickers.
Yeah, a million, over a million, right?
So his number is at 75, and mine was at $1.25, just to be conservative, I said 600,000. So theoretically, it should be.
Alderman Havermail, I would remind you that if, and this is not for you, but if somebody wanted us to figure 75 cents with a 7% franchise fee, alls they need to do is ask, and we can provide the numbers. So I think we've been very clear that if somebody wanted to make a proposal, we'd be more than happy to run the numbers, so people wouldn't just have a figure in a head, in their head, they would have a figure on a piece of paper that they can study. But we have not been presented with that, just so you know. That's why we don't have exact numbers.
Well, okay.
Question?
reaction and, and their, how do I say it, activity in this, in this matter, they'd want to give it all three weeks, if I don't want to speak for the council, but I would imagine-
Mr. Farha, you will follow that for us?
I can't support $1.25, I think it's too high. And I will formally, once, once we get done with the speakers, I'm going to formally make a request, so, okay?
Oh, okay, I'll back off now.
Thank you.
And, and Russell, I'll be more than happy to answer your question if it's directed at us individually. I have no intent of supporting anything that keeps the garbage stickers intact. My intent is to amend this to go to full privatization at some point and get us out of this business. The second part of this is, again, without seeing numbers, there's no way I would move this forward without, I'm assuming that's what Alderman Farha's request is going to be, there's no way I would vote without having ran the numbers again for all of us to look at in a more detailed manner. So, just to answer, to be fair, you ask a question, I want to answer it.
And I appreciate your, your integrity and directness, and alls I'm trying to do is, I've watched this thing go for the last three months, and it's nuts.
I don't disagree with that. All right, thank you.
Your Honor.
Yes.
One thing that might help out, too, I know the administration has been working on a couple new proposals and options for us, too, that I think are going to hit the council tomorrow, so, with some new numbers and some new figures, that might be just another option to look at as well, that might, you might be a little bit more in support of.
Do I get to come to the meeting?
Sure, or you can sit down with me and I can go over them with you, Kyle, I'm sure anybody will. All right?
All right, I'll go away now.
The, the door is always open, Russell, you know that.
I'm scared of you.
Oh, you shouldn't be. Any additional questions?
Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Ash, appreciate it. Okay. It's going to be a hard act to follow, Mr. Powers, but you're next. If I could remind you, state your name and address for the record, you have five minutes.
Sure. Chris Powers, reside at 527 Broadway, and I'm sorry I didn't bring my guitar, but what the heck. I thought about putting this in the form of a poem, or a Jeopardy question, but this is the way it is. And in light of the new information that we're going to have some more proposals hitting this council soon, I'm not sure I want to read what I've written. I want to, and in light of what Mr. Hammer Mills said about wanting privatization, boy, I, I have some things to say, but let me be condensed and address the council in just a minute. If you don't mind, first, I'd like to address the, the news media here first.
Jesus.
So forgive me for reading, because I didn't commit this to memory. I wrote it this afternoon, and I'm not an actor, how about that? "News reporting like governing is hard work. You serve many masters, the foremost being truth. Access to sources, getting the story first, being respectful of public officials, those are important, but not as important as checking the so-called facts, refusing to be anyone's mouthpiece, and taking personal responsibility for delivering to the public what Bob Woodward called 'the best obtainable version of the truth.' So do the math for yourselves, question every turn of phrase you hear or use, and punch through all the controversy to the core of fact and the heart of truth. I urge you, be grateful for your seat at history and mindful of your role in the big things that matter, like good governance in small towns." So two, two weeks ago, this council received from committee, without recommendation, a formal proposal to radically change the method used to pay for garbage and recycling services by raising sticker fees 200% and decreasing the historical reliance on the city's general fund. Well, some remarkable things happened to get us to this point where we are tonight. The first was a series of public forums that the mayor held. He warned us of dire financial circumstances and perhaps losing the war in Europe. If, if the public didn't support privatization, a solution that you enthusiastically recommended, and which may actually come from other sources here on the council, or be supported by them at least. And your recommendation, by the way, came prepackaged, prefabricated, complete with charts, graphs, PowerPoint bullets, all based on ominous 10-year projections of dwindling revenue and skyrocketing expenses. But as we've seen, the public rejected privatization. I hope it stays rejected, at least that's the public's idea. And it's not in any mood for the garbage sticker shock that this council may consider in the current proposal. Mayors often use the word deficit to describe the general fund spending on garbage and recycling. For months, the local media parroted that description, but when there's no money being borrowed, use of the word deficit seems to pioneer a new meaning, if you don't mind me saying so, Mr. Mayor. One last item, chapter 21, section 322 of the Quincy City Code says, "All monies derived from the sale of the city's stickers shall be deposited in the solid waste management account and utilized for solid waste management activities, including recycling and other related costs, as may be determined by the City Council of Quincy," unquote. Note the language "deposited" in the solid waste management account and utilized for solid waste management activities, including recycling. That little passage does double duty.
You have one minute.
It directs the totality of sticker revenue to a specific fund and requires that recycling be among its uses. But it does not stipulate anywhere that sticker revenue shall be the sole source of funding, and there's no evidence in the city records anywhere to support that contention. So has there been transparency in this process? No. Partisan promotion of smaller government, yes. The perpetuation of a disastrous budget myth that now pits fire in police and garbage customers against one another for a little bit of the pie, that shrinking pie, yes. But we have a million dollar carryover. Supposedly, we have revenues that are coming in this year higher than projections, while our spending is under budget. I'm not sure what the retreat is for, but if you need another budget retreat, retreat from scare tactics, please. And the notion that your duty to balance a budget and deliver services is somehow unprecedented. In the words of Edward Armello, good night and good luck.
Do you have any questions? Thank you, Mr. Powers, appreciate it.
Move or resume the rules.
Sorry.
We have a motion, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, we are now sitting as the city council.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Alderman.
I would move that an amendment be provided to the city council next week, reducing the sticker fee to 75 cents, eliminating the 3% automatic escalator, and eliminating the language that requires the city of Quincy to be the sole provider of residential garbage collection, establishing a separate franchise fee for any waste haulers in excess of two trucks at 7%.
Your Honor, can I ask you a question real quick?
Yes.
Is this kind of jumping ahead of what he should maybe look at tomorrow?
No, we'll go ahead and-
No, we're not on the record.
Well, we'll, we'll prepare it, it's not a problem.
You deserve it.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, we will prepare the wording.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Alderman.
Is it appropriate to ask a question?
Of course it is.
Mike, and again, we, this is probably a better discussion once we see an amendment before us, but my question would be, you said 7% based on gross-
Gross revenue.
How do we determine gross?
They're going to have to provide the numbers. That's to be determined legally.
So we're going to have to take a look at their tax return?
No. I mean, to a certain extent, we're going to have to trust them, but they're going to have to provide the numbers. If we want to, we can audit it. Yes, Alderman.
Is that gross revenue fro- derived from residential customers in the city of Quincy?
Residential customers, right.
Okay. Well, then, at that point, before we move forward with that, and again, this might be a better discussion for next week, but then I would have a question of either, I guess, yourself or Glenda.
No.
Based on some of the assumptions we used before, now, there's question whether those are relevant or faulty or not, what are we looking, we've got, I looked up and I have the email where we, we did the pro forma of the dollar with the 3% escalator.
Mm-hmm.
I think we did a dollar with a 5% escalator.
Mm-hmm.
150, 3 and 5 as well.
Mm-hmm.
Next week, when we have that, and this other super-secret information we have here that we're being presented tomorrow, I guess, what, what, we need to see all of that again. I guess my question is, is that, with some of the assumptions we made about some of the problems this creates, or what does 75 cents do for us?
Well, we'll have to look at the numbers, but it's probably not going to be too much.
If nobody believes the numbers, then what's the point of doing any of this?
Well, the-
Every time we come up with numbers, we get told the numbers aren't correct.
Well, and the, I, I think, I think this gives people a better understanding of, one, how hard it is to, one, project on a sticker-based system. On a sticker-based system, the issue is you don't know who your customers are. And so we've done click counts, not once, but twice, and provided those, one, that's where the 8600 came for, based on a previous click count that was done before my administration, when they were talking about it before, but two, we updated based on Alderman Farha's request, and we, we gave that to you. We can tell you what the actuals are, because we have that budget information. I will tell you, it took some work to do a true P and L, I call it a P and L, some might disagree with me, on the garbage and recycle budget, because we have the actuals. When you're projecting in the future, one, you don't know what your insurance cost is truly going to be, we can project what our increases have been, workers' compensation, gas prices, landfill prices. And so we are doing our best to give you, this is our projected revenues, our projected expenses. Now, we plan on, whatever we adopt, to update every year so you guys can see, and then we can change if we, if we need to, but projections are projections. I mean, there's only, you know, I can't tell you what the revenues are going to be in 2017. I could tell you what they were in the past, and I could tell you based on historical averages what we projected to be, but I don't think you're ever going to get agreement from 100% of the people on 100% of your projections, but we're trying to be as, as candid and as transparent as we can.
But we actually do know the total number of stickers we sell each year, which is a shortcut to knowing exactly how much garbage we're collecting. What we don't know is how many people put out orange tubs, how many people have two and three orange tubs, and how many people put those, those orange tubs out and recycle only on a weekly basis. The whole system, when you go back, and I think Alan Vandabel, maybe Alan will want to come to speak to the council, but the whole system as it was set up was never to have a sticker system that replaced garbage collection or paid for garbage collection. The sticker tax, or the sticker fee, or the user fee, was to encourage recycling, and this is a program that has worked. We have lots of recycling. Now, we can argue about whether we're, we're getting enough revenue from recycling, whether or not we have people that are using the recycling system only and not providing garbage, but that's the facts, and Alderman Deusterhouse can comment to that if he wants. He was here.
I think from a, from a previous study that was done, again, before my administration, about 13,000 recycling customers. Again, now, the, the issue, when you have a, a click count, when you don't know your customers because you're not billing on a monthly basis, is that, you know, people could be gone on vacation. We have a lot of people that are gone for the winter. So 13,000 is, is what was, the numbers provided during a previous study by the previous administration, and I think you'll, we're probably never, unless we get to a billing system, be able to tell you down to the person how many customers we truly have.
Which is my point.
Yeah.
That 8600, basically, we think, we have customers that use the garbage collection system, and 74, excuse me, you said 13,000-
13,000.
Recycling-only customers, which leaves a gap of about 4,400 customers that aren't paying anything. And what the mistake the public makes is in assuming that somehow recycling's free. Recycling program, and Marty can step up and, and correct me if I'm wrong, runs around 600 or 700,000 a year. We net that against 60,000 to 70,000 dollars worth of recovery from recyclables. So that's, in part, one of the issues that we're dealing with. But that being said, it's always been an ongoing cost of government. It's been assumed to be an ongoing cost. We don't have an enterprise fee for police. We don't have an enterprise fee for street and snow removal. We don't have an enterprise fee for fire. And I applaud Alderman Havre, he's been very honest, he wants to establish an alter, excuse me, an enterprise fee for garbage collection separately.
No, no, that's not accurate.
Okay, what do you want to do?
I want us to get it out of the business.
Okay.
And we're done with it.
But it is an enterprise.
Well, I don't know how many private police or fire departments there are in the country.
Well, I'm just saying.
I mean, it, that's a little bit difficult to make that analogy, because the, by any measure, the private sector does this, this service efficiently. So I, I don't know too many private police, fire, ambulance, well, there's ambulance service, but police or fire departments in the, I've, I've never heard of one, quite frankly, and I know this, I know if we don't change, and that, we can call it doom, gloom, or, or dire consequences, or dire predictions, or whatever you want to call it, I do know this from looking at the financials, we're at a, other aldermen have said it, a number of aldermen that have talked about various sticker prices have said it, we are at a tipping point with our budget, okay? The reason we have a million dollars left over is because we stopped spending money. It's not because, you know, if we spent, if we did a zero budget where we spent every month, not a zero budget, if we spent what we budgeted every year, we would not have that surplus. I think we should do baseline budgeting and, and budget for what we spend. I think when we do that, at that point, we, we lose those cash, or not cash reserves, but carryovers, and at that point, we have to do something to address that budget shortfall. Because there is a budget shortfall if we do it that way. We have a structural deficit in our budget every year. We spend more than we may take in that year. And one of these days, that is unsustainable, period.
And Alderman, just so, so you know, the Alderwoman Lepper had worked with Director of Ministry of Services, kind of hacked him back over the weekend to say, what would a dollar sticker look like if we bought four trucks, two automated for garbage, and two recycling, and allowed some type of a tote system? So it's not out of the ordinary, it's just basically reducing the amount of trucks we buy, so it's not changing anything drastic, but anyway, you'll see that tomorrow, it's just something that occurred over the weekend that, like Alderman Farha, Alderman, Alderwoman Lepper wanted us to look at, so you guys will have an idea. But just so you know, it's, it's, it came out of discussions over the weekend.
And Mr. Chairman, for full disclosure, and I'll, I'll shut up after this, so I apologize, but I have asked legal to draft a, an ordinance for full privatization. I just want, you know, Alderman Farha was up front, I want to make sure I'm up front as well, that I have asked for that to be prepared as an option for next week as well.
Alderman Deusterhouse, yes, sir.
Historically, the general fund has supported this, this vital service, and for good reason. And I think the public hearings pointed out that the people like the service they have, they like it the way it is, and they like the way it's financed. The sticker fees were not designed to be a, a money-raising component, it was an incentive, and money received would be used for that purpose. The mistake we're making here is raising the sticker fees or driving to a pure fee-related system undermines the system that you have. You, you, Alderman Havremail wants to privatize, you don't have to do anything, Alderman. You raise the sticker fee high enough, you will, you will privatize the service, de facto privatization. People will migrate where the cost is less, I guarantee you. Another mistake we might make here is, is assuming that if we sell a million stickers at 50 cents a sticker, that if we raise it to some unknown number, that we're going to sell a million stickers. I'd say that's a mistaken notion on our part. I guarantee you, the number will drop, because the incentive gets greater, so what are you going to raise? Considerably less than you think you'll raise. Again, I don't advocate that, because you're driving to strictly a fee-based system. People have asked me, general fund supports this mostly right now, what happens to those funds if we start paying more for our service? Do we get a refund? Do we get a rebate? I guarantee you, there'll be no refunds. It'll be redirected somewhere else. That appears to be the intent here, is to install a massive tax increase and redirect the available funds to something else. On the face of it, that's what it is.
Any additional questions? Thank you.
I have an ordinance for a first presentation, and this is the Quincy Adams County Enterprise Zone termination date extended.
Uh, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Alderman.
I'd like to make, make a motion, we table this.
Oh, no, not this one.
I'm sorry.
You want me to do it?
Yeah, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I move this to be read a first time by title only.
Second. We have a motion, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, clerk will now read this first time by title.
An ordinance amending the Quincy Adams County Enterprise Zone termination date here ends first reading by title only.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Alderman.
I just want to explain that this is just applying for an extension, basically. I'll let Chuck Beilheimer come up and explain. We dealt with this in finance, so Chuck, go ahead.
The legislature has passed, and the governor signed a new enterprise zone legislation offering a new 25-year enterprise zone program. That's not what we're doing here. That legislation also included a six-month extension of the existing enterprise zones, allowed communities to make application for their new zone designation. This is basically what they call an auto renewal, but we still have to go through the process of having all the county and city boards approve it. So this gives us an extension from December 31, 2015, till June 2016, to keep the enterprise zone program in place as it is, and to give us time to make application for a new zone designation.
Are there any questions?
Do you need this taken care of tonight, or can we let this be read three times?
You could take it, let it ride for a week.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Alderman Farha, I, don't, don't we have to move this on to, I mean, don't we have to get this before the other bodies?
We told the bodies, we'll be, we'll be in front of them in March. All the other taxing bodies, we have to go to and get their participation. So we told them, once the city of Quincy, the city of Mount Sterling, county board, Brown County Board, all approve it, then we'll be going to the individual taxing bodies for their participation.
Well, but doesn't that create a timeframe problem where we probably should move this through?
I think one week doesn't cause us any heartburn right now.
Well, we're, we're talking two more weeks.
I-
Well, I was assuming that next week you'd do us-
Right. You want us to do it now, or do you want us to do-
Let's just do it now.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I move the section 2207 of the code of the city of Quincy be waived to allow this extension to go forward.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any questions? Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Gale.
Aye.
Mann.
Aye.
Deusterhouse.
O.
Bauer.
Aye.
Holbrook.
Aye.
Havremail.
Aye.
Farha.
Aye.
Sasson.
Aye.
Ryan.
Aye.
Lepper.
Aye.
Mussolini.
Aye.
Brink.
Aye.
Heinecke.
Aye.
Hostlog.
Aye.
13 ayes, one no.
The ordinance is adopted.
I have another ordinance up for first presentation, and this is amending section, section 13.208, and it has to do with amending overtime, sick time, and future benefits for police and fire administrators, and sick pay buyback.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move this to, back to personnel.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, order.
Of the finance report, transfers to be $148,000, expenditures to be $177,650.74, and payroll to be $131,089.23, Farha, Sasson, Deusterhouse, Hostlog, Havremail Committee.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Alderman Farha.
I move the report we received and filed, and the vouchers issued for the various amounts.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any questions? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Gale.
Aye.
Mann.
Aye.
Deusterhouse.
Aye.
Bauer.
Aye.
Holbrook.
Aye.
Havremail.
Aye.
Farha.
Aye.
Sasson.
Aye.
Ryan.
Aye.
Lepper.
Aye.
Mussolini.
Aye.
Brink.
Aye.
Heinecke.
Aye.
Hostlog.
Aye.
14 ayes.
So ordered. Any additional business, Madam Clerk?
No, sir.
Alderman Gale, welcome back, it's good to see you. Would you have any new business for us today?
No.
Alderwoman Mann.
No new business, sir.
Alderman Deusterhouse.
No new business, Your Honor.
Alderman Bauer.
No, sir.
Alderman Holbrook.
None, Your Honor.
Alderman Havremail.
No, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Just have one piece of business, want to congratulate the Quincy Notre Dame Palmers and the Quincy High School Palm Dance squads, both of whom won state championships this week. So, very proud of our dancers and our coaches, so good job to the teams. Alderman Farha.
No, Your Honor.
Alderman Sasson. and the Quincy High School Palm Dance squads, both of whom won state championships this week, so very proud of our dancers and our coaches, so, uh, good job to the teams. Alderman Farah.
No, Your Honor.
Alderman Sasson.
No, sir.
Alderman Ryan.
Yes, Your Honor. Um, I'd like to call the chief up here, Chief of Police, I'm sorry. Um, he, he's earned my, uh, thanks and respect, so, um, he works tirelessly throughout the